Meeting of District 721 School Board to order. Please note, all of the board members are here except Kit and Shane Bauer. And now we'll stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Recite the oath of office. Do we stand for that? Okay, did we raise our hands in or what?
Sure.
I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of this state. And that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of school board member of Independent School District 721. To the best of my judgment and ability. Does someone want to make a motion to approve the agenda?
Who moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And now, the first item. On the organization of the board is a resignation of a school board member. Does... Someone want to speak to that?
Yes, last week, received resignation from our board chair, Kit and Shane Bauer. She'll be moving out of state, so that opens up a school board member position here.
And per state statute, I've been researching it. And basically because there's less than a year left of her term. And she would normally have, her term expired December 31st. The board can appoint somebody. We do not have to have a special election, which is very costly and time consuming. So, the board is able to appoint someone to fill the term until the election, normal election in November of 2020. And I believe you have it on your agenda a little bit later to discuss options for that. But for now, just know that you are able to appoint someone. And that's really what I would recommend doing because the term expires in December 31st anyway. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Sandy. Okay, now, the next item is election of officers.
So, do we need to accept the resignation?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
They can do that first.
So, I'll make a motion to accept Kit's resignation.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so, then we move to election of officers for 2020. Do I have a nomination for Chair?
I'd like to make a nomination for Chair of Jean.
Second.
Great job.
Thank you. Second, let's see, so then we need a... Oh, are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Third time, are there any other nominations?
I'll make a motion that we pass unanimous ballot for Jean Kubisch for Board Chair.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And now we open nominations for Vice Chair. If no one else has anybody in mind, I'd like to nominate Tammy Pexa.
I'll second the nomination.
All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations?
I'll make a motion that we pass unanimous ballot for Tammy Pexa for Vice Chair.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Okay, and then, the... Let's see, is it Treasure?
Treasure.
Next, okay. Are there any nominations for Treasure?
I'd like to make a nomination for Kim Holden to remain in that position.
I'll second the motion.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations?
Anybody else want to do it? I'll make a motion to pass unanimous ballot for Kim Holden for Board Chair, Board Treasure.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And, what's your title?
Clerk.
Clerk, I'm sorry. Are there any nominations for Clerk of the Board?
I nominate Denny. I'll go.
I'll second.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations?
I, a unanimous vote for Denny for Clerk for this coming year.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so now we have some new officers. And the next thing is a resolution determining Columbus Day is not considered a legal holiday. An approval of meeting dates and times for 2020.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to consider the resolution determining that Columbus Day is not considered a legal holiday.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to consider the following resolution. Be it resolved that pursuant to Minnesota statutes, the School Board of Independent School District 721 has determined that Columbus Day is not to be considered a district holiday for the New Prague area school districts. How do you vote on that, Leo?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Yes.
Denny, yes, item passes.
Okay, and then, oh, that included the board meeting schedule?
No.
Oh, okay, so that...
Separate one.
Okay, so, now we...
And that's, that's not a resolution.
Oh, okay.
That's it.
So, and then we have, have a schedule for the 2020 board meeting, meetings? Motion to approve?
I printed it off.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Schedule for the 2020 board meetings. And, okay, the next item is designation of official repositories. And, the current ones are Round Bank of New Prague, New Market Bank, Wells Fargo, Minnesota School District Liquid Asset Fund, Franzin Bank and Trust of Lonsdale, First Bank and Trust, US Bank, PMA Securities, Minnesota Trust, Commerce Bank, and Associated Bank.
I'll make a motion that we continue to use the same depositories.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And carried. And, the next is designation of legal counsel. So, we have Knutson, Flynn, and Deans, Ratwick, Roselack, and Maloney, Warrenson, Goggins, Neisen, Morris, and Brever, PC, Kennedy, and Graven, Chartered, Heitzman, and Associates, PA, Henson, and Efron, and Rep. Anderson, Squires, and Walzberger, PA. Can I have a motion to approve legal counsel?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Then, next is designation of official publication forum. And we have the New Prague Times newspaper, the Lonsdale Area News Review, and the school district website, www.npaschools.org.
I'll make a motion to continue the same forums.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And carried. And the next item is a school board compensation. And there's a list of, of some of the area school boards, including New Prague, and their, and their compensation. Does anyone want to propose anything else, or do you want to stay with, with what we have?
Oh, we lost Sandy.
Got a question?
Um, yeah, I wanted to know when, it's been, Denny, how long has it been?
Yeah, it's been at least, at least 10 years, if not longer.
Yeah.
I was, I was going to say that, I know when I was in city council, it had been forever. And I think maybe the second last year I was on there, we had made it a goal to raise it within the next two or three years. So, it looked more, I mean, so we were looking into the future more than trying to fill our own selfish pocket. And I, looking at this $500 figure compared to the city, and compared to Northfield just raised theirs, their school district, because it's about the same size. I would think that it should get raised some for, in the future.
Yeah, right now...
I'm not saying we have to do it now, but...
Well, you could do it now. There's, of our 10 comparable school districts, the annual compensation is, is number 10. And then, so... We tend to use comparatives for all of our negotiations and all our settlements with other, other groups. And I don't see any reason to have this board be any different than any of our other groups in the district. Yeah, the, and then if you notice too, on the comparison to, even if you win a $200, you'd still be at the bottom. I mean, you'd be tied with Sartell, but they're actually, they get, yeah, and their meetings are actually paid for more, so... Up to you.
Does anybody have any suggestions for what they think the compensation should be?
I would say leave it the same.
You could think about it for the future, too.
I'm okay leaving it the same this year, like I said, and maybe make a goal the next year or two. We raise it to at least 600, so we're equal to, I think I saw Northfield's. Yeah, Northfield's the same size as us, and they're just 600, or wait. I'm looking at the wrong one.
Yeah, there's 600 more.
Yeah.
I just think with three brand-new board members, it would be bad optics to...
Yeah, I agree, totally.
They're jacking up the...
No, I agree. But, it's, it's, it's on paper that it is low, so I'd say in the next year or two. We'll, Tammy and I and Leo will be here for sure, so...
I just know it's something that usually just gets passed over for many years. And it, it has been a while since it's been actually looked at and discussed. It's something that I would like to look at and discuss at one of our work sessions. And actually set it as an agenda item so that we can talk about it. Not saying we should do it, but I think we should look at it. Instead of just, you know, every January, here it is. I think we should have a conversation.
I think it'd probably be good to have a conversation in November.
Yep.
Yeah, I agree. It'd be better to have a conversation on it and then say that we are planning on doing this than it is to just walk into it.
Yes. Exactly. Yes.
I'm okay with that.
Yep.
That's, that was my whole reason for bringing it up, because we, the only time I can ever remember talking about it is January.
Yep.
So, I'd like to look at it in the future.
I have a motion to accept the compensation as is, and...
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And next we have the board committee assignments. So, we'll need to, need to change the ones that have Kit's name on them for sure. Does anyone else have any requests that they would like to change?
Obviously, executive would be you and Tammy.
Right.
On negotiations, it would be you also, Jean.
You know, I'm, does the, is the Chair always, okay?
Yeah, Chair's usually...
Okay.
Okay, then, the other one would be...
Budget.
Budget. Now, does that, that doesn't have to be the Chair, right? Does it?
No, it doesn't, but it doesn't meet very often either.
Okay.
Oh, I'd like to stay on the budget.
Anybody else interested in that? Otherwise, I'll, I'll take it if no, if no one else is interested in it, okay?
Yep.
Okay, and then the next one is teachers meet and confer.
We've had one meeting in seven years, but...
I can go on that one.
And then, the other one she's on is the middle school parent advisory committee.
I can take that.
All right.
Okay, so...
Are we going to... So, are you and Kim gonna stay on policy?
I'm fine with that.
And, how about backup for Southwest Metro for Denny?
Could this be amended when the new person is named too?
Sure.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, because the new person should be involved somewhat, so I would agree with that.
Yeah, we don't have, we don't have backups for several of the committees. Leo's also. So, I have a motion to accept the committee's assignments as amended.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
You want to add in there that we'll look at it again once the new person?
We'll look at it again when, when the new person is...
Like in March or February, depending on when it's decided? Good.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And, next is MDE recertification of identified official with authority. So, let's see, it says, "The school board must designate and recertify the identified official with authority to authorize user access to MDE secure websites for your local education agency or organization." So, that is...
Director recommends authority to Tim Dittburner to act on identity. I make a motion to accept both Tim and Janelle to act on our behalf for this.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And the next is to designate a board member as the Minnesota State High School League representative.
That was me. Yeah.
Anybody want to make a motion for, to have Mark continue?
I'll make a motion that Mark continues as our designee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And the next is a resolution designated the clerk and treasurer duties to district office staff.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to consider the resolution designating clerk and treasurer duties to a district office staff person.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to consider the following resolution. Whereas statutes empower the school board to combine the duties of the office of clerk and treasurer of the school board in one person in the office of business affairs of the school district. Whereas the school district has decided to combine the duties of the clerk and treasurer in one person in the office of business affairs. Therefore, be it resolved, the director of business services of the school district is designated by the School Board of Independent School District 721 to perform the duties of clerk and treasurer of the district. How do you vote on that, Tammy?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Dennis, yes, item passes.
Next is to authorize the superintendent or director, oops, I skipped one. Authorize specific district office staff to make electronic or paper transactions from any institution for the district through January of 2021. The, Kim Dittburner and Sandy Lynn are designees.
I'll make a motion to have the designees stay the same.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes. And then, to, the next one is to authorize the superintendent or director of business services to execute contracts and purchase orders for goods and services contained within the board-approved budget.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, now, I motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carried. And, discussion items, discuss and move for approval of process to fill board vacancy. Is that, are we going to discuss that at the...
Yeah, you can, we can discuss that right now.
Okay.
I mean, we talked about it a little bit earlier. That it's under a year or so, we'll be able to appoint. And what's the minimum number of days? Do we leave it open? Yeah, how we post that, or...
Yeah, there aren't any rules about how to fill the position. The reason we don't have to hold a special election is because, there's a chart that the state, Secretary of State puts out about when special elections are required and when they're not. And per that chart, we're not required to have a special election, but you can use whatever process you like. We did have a process, was it about nine years ago? And I think it was shortly after an election, or, maybe you can help. They did, they conducted interviews.
There was a couple, there was a couple, because it was, Sherry got appointed to...
That was right after an election.
That was right after the election. Sherry got appointed, but we had to apply. And so, we went through the interview process. And then, immediately after filling that one, another position became available, so then, that's how I got appointed.
Yep.
But then, shortly after that, we had the resignation of a board member who was within a year, that was, she was moving to Iowa.
Right.
And, so we were able to, we discussed as a board to get someone who was very well-known in, of the district. And we appointed Tim Reebuck to that position.
Yep.
So, we could go to a past board member if we wanted, because it's within a year. So, we could have a conversation with, if there's a board member that may be willing to step up for just that year. And then, the election would come in November, and then whoever gets elected in November would fill the position that in January. But that board, past board member could come on if that's what we wanted.
That's one process, or...
Right.
We could post it in the newspaper, inviting any interested parties to put their name in for consideration. And then, we could have an interview process of if there's more than one person that would be interested. Where we could interview the people that would be interested, and then make a decision amongst ourselves as to which person out of the people that volunteered would be selected.
Correct.
How about asking the people that ran the last time that didn't get elected?
How, how many people were there?
Three.
Total of six.
Six.
Yeah, there was three that weren't.
Three.
That would be three people right after that.
I remember two of the names. I don't remember the third name.
Yeah. I, I just think you better be careful about asking people. I think if you kept it, you know, we posted or kept it open for a couple of weeks after it's been in the New Prague Times and on our website. And, and take, you know, applications wherever you want to call for it, and then...
I think that would be the best way to go.
Yeah. Open it up. May, maybe those three people that thought of doing it were not, are not necessarily interested at this time to do it. So, I think opening it up to, you know...
We did it both ways in city council when we had to fill seats.
Yeah.
We used past elections, or we just had applications, and then interviewed them, all the board interviewed them. So, I'm open to either way. Whatever works.
And if you have a past board member, they're going to know what's going on already versus somebody brand-new.
Right.
For, you know...
For the short period of time.
The short period of time.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and that could be something that could be done if nobody steps forward with an interest in it, too.
Yep.
That would open the door up for us doing that, absolutely. Well, I'll make a motion that we invite interested members of the school district to be considered for a school board opening because of Kit's resignation. And that if there are more than one, if there's more than one person that's interested, we'll have an interview process to select the person that would fill the vacancy.
For a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
What's our timeframe?
Right, so you have a, you know, a meeting coming, you could have a special meeting for the interviews. That's what we did one of the times, we had a special meeting. Because if we start advertising it, well, tomorrow is the first we could do that. You'll want to leave about a two-week timeframe, I would think.
I'd say so, yeah.
And so, you could wait to do the interviews at the workshop on February, what would that be, Janelle? 10th? Or you could do something in between the 27th and the 10th, have a special meeting if necessary. You just require a three-day notice and do a special meeting out here.
I, I'd like to go for the 10th of February. I think that already we are meeting that night anyway, so I think that way we wouldn't have to, you know, look at our calendars and whatever, because we probably have them.
And what kind of application materials would you like? You know, they could submit a letter of interest. Tammy, do you remember what happened when you applied?
I had to do a letter.
Okay, I would say a letter of interest.
A letter of interest was what we did.
Probably is the best way to go. I mean, we have applications, but it doesn't really apply. So, a letter of interest with a, with a resume, probably. You get a little idea of their background.
And leave it, and we could probably leave it open-ended, the way, you know, that they would like to introduce themselves to us and whatever.
Yeah, but the way they'd like to apply. Yep, they can apply to Janelle, to the board secretary, address it to the board secretary. And I'll, I'll put like a, a two-week deadline, once we get information out. Okay, I can think through the rest of the, rest of the details. Is that acceptable?
Yep.
Yep.
So, we're going to discuss it on the 10th, then?
No, I think we're interviewing.
We'll interview them.
We'll interview them.
If there's more than...
Before the meeting, or?
As part of the work.
As part of the work session, okay.
And I can get recommended interview questions from MSBA. I mean, I'm sure they'd have recommended interview questions, so I can kind of take the details. And, and between Janelle and I can plan what it would look like.
Because then we could appoint at that last meeting of February, correct?
Yes.
Okay, next item is approval of the master agreement and MOU for 2019 to '21 with principals.
Sandy will comment on this.
Yeah. So, the, you have the principal agreement for approval tonight. And it's as we have discussed previously. The settlement is very similar to what we've had with other employee groups, with a small increase to insurance in the second year. Salary increases both the first and second year of the agreement. Updated bereavement schedule, so it's very similar to the other groups we've been settling.
Any questions for Sandy? Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And the next is approval of the master agreement for 2019 to '21 with the clerical association.
Yes, again, this contract is for approval tonight. It has a small increase insurance in the second year, has an updated bereavement schedule, as well as vacation schedule. What's different with the clerical unit is that we conducted a competitive analysis and discovered that we were very, not very competitive with longevity for one of the levels that we had. So, the new contract increases longevity to an appropriate level, I think. And, so in that respect, it's a little bit different than the others, but other than that, it's, it's in the same, same vein as the other groups.
What was the approximate number of people that are in this group?
About 30.
About thirty.
Thirty.
Any other questions for Sandy? Motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second the agreement.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. And, next we go into a closed session for negotiations.
I'll make a motion that we go into closed session, and then after that, uh, we will adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Sorry.